Thank you. We're going live.
Morning, everyone. We ready? I don't know where Michelle is at. There's Michelle, we ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Some thumbs up? Okay, very good. Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. As you all know, 2022 has taken excuse from 2021 and started off with a surge. So today's meeting will be discussing our community response to COVID-19 and this most recent rise in cases. Today's meeting was called by our County Commission Chairman, Bill Proctor. And before I hand it off to him, in terms of scope for today's meeting, we will be discussing our longstanding coordination and response operations among all local agencies. We will receive updates from a number of items, including our community testing operations, and of critical importance, all ongoing and/or additional efforts to support our local healthcare capacity during this surge. Notwithstanding the fact that many if not all organizations on this call today are actively involved and represented in our formal emergency management structure that we have had and will continue to have in place to ensure a coordinated, community-wide response to the pandemic while we conduct this meeting today, as we've done with previous surges, among leaders and policymakers, because we know that the current surge may have the capacity to disrupt school operations due to transmission, rapid transmission, could impact employers due to employee illness, and again, challenge our healthcare capacity. And those discussions and policy implications are certainly appropriate for this group of leaders today. So thank you all for joining us. And with that, Chairman Proctor, let me hand it off to you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank you. Thank you, Vince, for opening us up and getting us started. To those persons who are here on the call this morning, we certainly thank you so much. We've been guided and influenced by all the things that science have told us. The results from tests, the surging numbers of COVID compel our gathering this morning. We are fortunate that we have the capacity to operate on a frequency, the frequency of science. And though there are different frequencies on the dial, like an analog radio, we want to tune in and roll that baby right to the right, just the right spot. And this morning, we're inviting us to the right spot to hear information, data which prepares us to protect and provide safety for the health of our community. Or said another way, that we are charged as a county government to do all that we can to provide for the health and safety and welfare of the public. That is our purpose today. With the science, the numbers that are talking to us, we believe that we are on the frequency of care, commitment, communication, and having courage to do that, which we're charged to do in a time such as this. There are a number of outstanding personalities and leaders of this community who we hope to give an opportunity to share this morning, but without taking up additional time, we are hopeful to be done in 90 minutes, but certainly not to exceed 120 minutes. So Vince, we've got an extraordinary list of people here. If so long, we'd be here for another 15. I'm gonna suggest that we move directly into the direction of covering what we've outlined for today.
You got it. Thank you, Chairman. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the county's ongoing pandemic response efforts. In terms of overview, everyone, since the very beginning of the pandemic nearly two years ago, the county has continued coordinating community partners to ensure a unified, highly-coordinated response to COVID. And you'll hear more about this important emergency management structure, which has been in place from the start and which will remain in place and be critical in our efforts for preparing for new variants. And Omicron appears to be one of the most contagious we've seen. The purpose of today's meeting, again, as I said, is to discuss the current convergence of the highly contagious COVID-19 Delta and Omicron variants, which is leading to new highs in average daily cases nationally and locally. To discuss ongoing operations on the call today, you'll see members from our county team who have spent the last two years working alongside our community partners, many of whom have joined us on the call, and you'll hear from, to coordinate a critical pandemic response and recovery operations. You'll also see representatives from local government, healthcare providers, hospitals, public health, law enforcement, and our colleges and universities. Later on in the agenda, you'll hear from Leon County Emergency Management Director Kevin Peters, and he'll discuss this coordinated effort more. But it cannot be overstated, the level of daily and sometimes hourly coordination that the county engages with our partners in, and you'll see, again, those included on this call and beyond. So over the past 650 days of operations, emergency management has coordinated approximately 1,900 conference calls, with more than 25,000 participants across every discipline, which has led to such things as the distribution of 1.7 million pieces of PPE, nearly 1 million masks, and one of the most robust testing operations in the state of Florida. I say this because these, just these highlights are going to be particularly relevant to us dealing, again, with this current surge. The county's Director of Human Services and Community Partnerships, Shinkton Lammy, will provide a fuller update on testing and protecting vulnerable populations as part of our ongoing efforts. The county recently convened our FQHC partners, bond and neighborhood, to quickly stand up testing in locations throughout the county. And I can't say enough about our FQHCs, and again, hopefully you'll hear from them during this call as well. Just this Sunday, they held two testing events at county libraries, conducting more than 500 tests. And again, that was just at the pop-up clinics alone. And Shinkton will discuss testing capacity and deployment plans in just a moment. You'll hear from County Attorney Chastity Osteen for an update on the evolving legal landscape, which has and will continue to be a factor in our local response efforts. Before I hand it off to Chastity, I want to also acknowledge that public information is central to the county's operations, and Matt Cavell will speak to that more at the end of the update. I've also asked Matt to help facilitate some of the speakers on today's agenda, so you'll hear more from him after the county attorney's update. Finally, because I know the chairman has asked that participants here talk a little bit or share their respective organizational plans as we deal with this surge and perhaps other surge, let me just say for our part, from a county organizational standpoint, that we continue to follow national public health guidance from the CDC to the T. When the CDC guidance suggests changes, we make those changes in real time. I joke when I say that we have taken this radical approach from the beginning, but it's one approach that doesn't require us to become smarter than the world's public health experts, and certainly that served us well organizationally. And I know that you all consider the same guidance in your decision-making in your respective organizations as well. One last thing from me before I hand it off to the county attorney. It's important to underscore that the speakers you'll hear from today during today's update, again, have been engaged in this response to the pandemic for over 650 days, as well as, we acknowledge, many of the participants that are on this call. I know there have been times for some of us during the last two years that our response to the pandemic was so all-encompassing that it felt like it was the only thing that we could do or think about. Well, that's the level of attention that this group, again, that you'll hear from today, have had to have throughout this time, as they've managed and sourced and coordinated and communicated based on the various stages of the virus and what that has required us to do in order to protect our community. So with that, you'll hear that, what you'll hear is that the all-important structure today of our countywide communication and collaboration that was established on day one and through the various stages of the pandemic will continue throughout this response, of course. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chastity Osteen, our county attorney, to discuss COVID-19 and related legal issues. Chastity?
Mr. Administrator, Chastity, before you step forward, thank you very, very much. We do want to acknowledge the presence of our mayor online today, State Representative Ten, three university presidents, the superintendent of schools, the chairman of the school board. And what we're doing today is to afford our collective members of this community to know how, what we have been doing. But we're wanting also to hear from those entities with respect to your planning, your testing, your operations and function, that if Leon County can augment, if Leon County can further undergird and support your effort with respect to protecting our citizens, we're trying to take note of that and make sure that there is a seamless support system as well as a transferable aspect of resource sharing where needed. So Vince, we'll make sure that we allow for the leadership of the community to share what they're doing. Testing, as we've stated before, is extraordinarily important in these times. And with that being said, please note that we're sharing Leon County's high effort. We wouldn't be here today if we knew it all, but we are here today because we don't know it all. So we're sharing, we're hoping to hear from the various instruments that serve across the community. And Ms. Chastity Osteen now, to give us that real sense of where we are since November, when the legislature met. Chastity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. So the legal landscape has changed recently and certainly since the county previously adopted its emergency mask ordinance. As all of you know, the county, the charter of county has blob powers, so self-government, but it cannot act in consistent with general law or with special law approved by a voter, you know, vote of the electors. So we do have some constraints. We also have constitutional constraints. That has come into effect in this past year, certainly with respect to vaccinations, for example. We cannot require persons to provide any documentation certifying their COVID vaccination status or post-infection recovery as a condition to gain access to entry upon or services from the county. That became effective July 1st because it was enacted by the state legislature in the 2021 legislative session. As of November 18th of last year, we are also prohibited from imposing a COVID-19 vaccination mandate for any full-time, court time, or contract employees. Penalty for that is $5,000 per violation, meaning each employee would be subject to the requirement. So from the county's perspective, it is very constrained in terms of what it can require from a vaccination point of view. In terms of masks, there have been several developments, one of which was a decision that came out of the First District Court of Appeals, which is binding precedent in Leon County. That's the Green versus Alachua County case. That decision was issued in June of last year. Basically, what the First District Court of Appeals has found is that the constitutional right of privacy is implicated if someone is required to wear a mask in the public place. What that does is trigger strict scrutiny, which is a very, very high constitutional analysis that the county would have to meet if it were to impose a mask requirement again. That burden would be on the county, and it is basically, the requirement is the least restrictive means to achieve a compelling government interest. It's legally, I know, but effectively, it creates a very high bar, and the county would have to lay a very good legal foundation to survive any sort of a challenge to any sort of a mask requirement. We've also had some changes in our emergency powers under Chapter 252. This again goes back to the 2021 legislative session. A new subsection four was created for 252.38, which outlines the powers of county governments and municipal governments. And basically, what it did was it defined, it uses a term, "emergency order." That really is a term of art. It can be an order, it can be a proclamation, it can be an ordinance, but any of those things that are issued or enacted in response to emergency under Chapter 252 or Chapter 31, which is the public health chapter, that is not weather-related, a weather-related emergency, and that, this is a quote from the statute, because it hasn't been interpreted by court, to my knowledge, "that limits the rights or liberties of individuals or businesses within the political subdivision," triggers this new provision in the law. And what that says is, "For any sort of emergency order to survive a legal challenge, it must be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling public health or safety purpose, it must be limited in duration, applicability, and scope to reduce any infringement on individual rights or liberties to the greatest extent possible." So again, what the legislature has done is effectively created a heightened bar for the county to adopt and enforce any requirement in an emergency order that would otherwise implicate the rights or liberties of individuals or businesses within the county. There are also time limits that have now been imposed statutorily. That order, once issued, would expire after seven days unless there is a meeting of the county commission and a majority vote of the county commission in seven-day increments to extend that emergency order. The cap on the duration of any such emergency order is now 42 days, and once you issue an emergency order, the statute now prohibits the county from issuing a substantially similar emergency order. No one knows what that means. It has not been challenged, it has not been interpreted by the court, so we've yet to know exactly what that would look like. Also, the statute says that the governor can invalidate such an emergency order at any time if the governor determines that such an order unnecessarily restricts individual rights or liberties. So the legislature has definitely imposed a framework that substantially modifies the authority of the county to act in certain emergency circumstances. The county, in response to this, has amended its county code of ordinances for consistency with those changes in Chapter 252, and that can now be found in Chapter 2, Article 3, Divisions 1 through 3 of the Leon County Code of Ordinances. That is basically a very quick, high-level overview of the legal changes that have occurred in the past year or so.
Thank you, Chastity. And with that, we will bring in Matt Cavell, our Assistant to the County Administrator for Community Relations and Resilience. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, and thank you for all those on the call. I am the person responsible for emergency management and public information, and the combination of those during the pandemic has been more important than ever about proper actions and also supply and mitigation. One of the most significant parts, as the administrator had touched on in his opening, that we'll be talking about is testing. I want to pass it off to the health officer in just one second, but I do want to take a moment to express that we cannot overemphasize the importance of testing during this period in the pandemic. And the importance of testing during this period is to identify infections early, to seek isolation or intervention. And here locally in the community, as the administrator had said, we are fortunate to have a large amount of capacity, though that capacity has been tested following the holiday travel, as well as some holiday closures of private and public testing sites that occurred for the New Year's Day holiday. So again, the testing that's in place is significant, however, with that pent-up demand, we're seeing longer lines at community sites and organizations. However, our partners, FDOH and others, are finding opportunities to bring pop-up testing to communities that need it for capacity, or we are also finding the opportunity to increase our footprint and operations at existing locations. And FDOH, as Claudia will allude to in her comments, are finding opportunities to even increase that footprint at potential other site exploration. So again, testing, important for all the reasons we understand, especially as folks quarantine and try to keep others safe. But I will say that today, some Leon County school sites for testing are reopening, several. Tomorrow, the remainder reopen, and then all of the other sites that are in place, from Huntington to Municipal Way, are continuing to operate at high demand. So with that, as I mentioned, for testing, I'm going to pass it off to Claudia shortly. You will then hear from Kevin, as the administrator had said, in regards to emergency management operations. Then we'll move on to a little bit more testing for pop-up from Shinkton Lammy, our Director of the Office of Human Services and Community Partnerships. And then, like we so desperately need to, we'll hear from our healthcare providers at the conclusion of the formal agenda before we turn it back over to the chairman. So with that, please, Claudia, I'm going to turn it over to you for the health update.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, County Administrator, Chairman Proctor, and everyone on the call. So happy to be here this morning to give you an update from the Department of Health in Leon. So our cases have certainly increased dramatically, as expected, from the week ending November the 29th, where we were at a very low of 1.9% positivity and 89 cases for the week, to the week ending December 23rd, where we had a 22.1% positivity rate and 4,051 cases. The most up-to-date data we have is from the CDC County Tracker that tells us about the seven days preceding January the 3rd, and the data is very similar to the DOH data. Additionally, it shows that there are 25 new hospital admissions over the last seven days. You may read different numbers in the paper, and my colleagues may report out different numbers. Those are for Leon County residents only, and those are new admissions. As far as the vaccination rate goes, for people that are 12-plus in Leon County, we're at 60% that have had at least one dose of a COVID vaccination, and if you look at the, you know, 5 and over, we're at 57%. Vaccinations are recommended for everyone 5 and over, and a booster is now recommended for everyone that is 16 and over. The timing of the booster right now is six months after completion of the first two doses of Moderna or Pfizer. I know that there is discussion about dropping that to five months. That is a decision that's pending. We haven't received anything formal on that. And then, for people that have had J and J, they should get a booster after, two months after the first dose, and they can have any kind of vaccine as their booster. I really want to emphasize that a booster is critically important to all those people that stood in line about a year ago, waiting for their vaccination, those people that are 65 and over, people that are at high risk. We know a lot of those folks are more than six months out, and they really need to get their booster, very, very important. Also, we are continuing to do outreach to populations that are undervaccinated, just doing education, and I want to give a shout-out to Marcus West and the Outreach Specialist from DOH Leon, who are hitting, who hit the streets regularly to do that work. In terms of testing, and I imagine this will be covered more in depth, the Department of Health in Leon has worked with Nomi Health, which is a private company, to do testing. They are the same company that does the testing at FAMU. So DOH Leon is not actually doing testing, we're just working with Nomi, and they are doing the testing. And testing is available at 2965 Municipal Way, which is the Leon County Health Department building next to the Sheriff's Office. And that testing site, as I said, is run by Nomi, and it is open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. Same Huntington Oaks, the Lake Jackson Library at 3840 North Monroe Street, testing, again, by Nomi, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. And then FAMU also uses Nomi, and I see Ms. Tatum is on the call, and she'll probably share more. My understanding is they are open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 to 4:30 for testing. And then CVS and Walgreens are also doing testing. As Matt, and then a couple of pop-up testing sites are scheduled for January 9th, Northeast Branch Library from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and then January 10th at Fort Braden Library from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I believe additional pop-up testing is being scheduled. We are collaborating with TMH and Nomi Health to set up another testing site that will have considerable capacity. We're working out the details right now. Hopefully, that will happen in the next week, and we will get the word out just as soon as that happens. I want to talk just a little bit about isolation guidance for people that do have COVID, are diagnosed with COVID, because there are so many cases right now, we're prioritizing the cases that we're investigating. So if you are diagnosed with COVID, you need to isolate for five days, and if you have no symptoms or your symptoms are improving after five days, then you can stop isolation, but you really need to wear a mask for an additional five days. And the mask that is most effective, of course, is an N95 or a KN95. For people that have had a close contact with a COVID case, if you're up-to-date on your vaccinations, that means a booster if it's time, then you can wear a mask around others for 10 days and get a test on day five, if possible. It may not be possible right now, and if you develop symptoms, certainly get tested. If you're a close contact who has not been vaccinated or is not up-to-date in your vaccinations, we do recommend that you stay home for five days, and then you can wear a mask for the next five days and resume your business. And we do recommend, again, that you get tested on day five, if possible, or if you develop symptoms, that you get tested. develop symptoms, that you get tested. So what is causing this dramatic increase? Well, as our county manager mentioned, and I think everybody knows, the assumption is that it's Omicron. And Omicron, the first case in the United States was identified on December the 1st. It does seem to be a lot more transmissible. The severity seems to be less, but really, we need a lot more data to be able to verify some of these things. It certainly seems that people that are vaccinated, even though they may get the, get infected, may transmit the disease, are not getting as sick as people that are unvaccinated. In terms of treatments, drugs are coming online, but they are not yet in the drugstores, and I'm sure that will be announced when they, when they arrive. There are some drugs out, there is a drug out there, one in particular, that is highly effective if given in the first three to five days after infection, and it's highly effective at preventing hospitalizations and deaths, but it is not available here yet, as far as I know. And then, CDR Health continues to provide the monoclonal antibody treatment. I'm not sure if they have any in stock right now. They had a very limited amount, and they are prioritizing who they give that to. So in terms of just general public health mitigation strategies, we, according to the CDC, you should wear a mask in indoor public places if you are not fully vaccinated and your age two or over. And, you know, hand washing should be continued, and then social distancing, if possible. So that is my report, and I will turn it back to Matt, so he can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claudia. I appreciate that. And while you probably wouldn't say this in your update, I do want to say that the health providers that are the backbone for testing in our community, in November and December, when the demand was lower, had, unlike some communities, made the decision to keep our testing footprint, the size that it was, so that now we have the opportunity to reach that demand and exceed that demand as needed. So again, credit to FDOH, healthcare providers, FQHCs on the call, hospitals in FAMU for operating the Wanish Way site there. So credit, credit to that to maintain that footprint. I'd like to continue on, though, to Kevin Peters to provide a quick update about emergency management operations and the federal process that we follow to ensure that all the partners on this call, in all various forms and beyond, are informed, and coordinated, and in lock step. So Kevin, I'm going to turn it over to you right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt, and good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. As Matt said, we do follow the federal process. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, as it's more commonly is known, has established a nationwide standard for emergency management called the National Incident Management System. Sometimes we refer to it as NIMS in the acronym form. Back in 2005, the Leon County Commission passed a resolution that did adopt the FEMA process, NIMS, as the incident management standard for Leon County, and that's a process we followed since that time. We organized under the NIMS process for our previous hurricanes over the recent history, 2016, 17, and 18. It's a process that allowed us to coordinate amongst our partners, to be effective in meeting the needs of the community during our hurricanes. It's a process that, through the training and the expertise that we have here in emergency management, that allows us to deploy and support other counties during their disasters. We were able to send emergency management staff to St. John's County following Hurricane Matthew. We sent staff to Liberty County following Hurricane Michael, and then even some staff over to Bay County following Hurricane Michael. So we have the expertise, we follow the process, we instruct the process to our county and city agencies here locally. We also provide training in the process to employees from some of the state agencies, where we're a regional training provider for that National Incident Management System process. The process is designed to coordinate multiple agencies with consistency to allow us to collect, share, and disseminate information, support the resource needs through a comprehensive resource management process. That's, that's the process that we were able to follow that allowed emergency management to acquire, warehouse, and distribute 1.7 million pieces of personal protective equipment, PPE. Through our conference call processes, we're able to coordinate the plans and information of the multiple partners that have been engaged in the process of fighting COVID. That information sharing also facilitates the public information and communication process that Matt and his team execute through social media posts, through our emergency information website, through our, at one point, daily, but I think now we're at weekly community updates, as well as the updates for our elected leadership here with the county. It's a process that allows us to effectively liaison with our local partners, our state partners, and federal partners with, with common language and common terminology. You know, we've used this incident management process under NIMS to coordinate the county's activities. We started that daily coordination with the Department of Health here in Leon County, Claudia and her team. First email exchange on that was January 21st of 2020, so we've nearly hit that two-year milestone of near daily coordination with our county's health department. Through the conference call process, as County Administrator mentioned earlier in the, in this presentation, over 1,900 calls over the past two years with 25,000 different participants. Beginning in March 2020, those weekly calls were with many of the sectors we've developed under our emergency management plans, from first responders to education, business and tourism, our homeless services providers, long-term care facilities, hospitals, and our primary healthcare providers. That doesn't even include the numerous state-level calls that we participated on with the State EOC and other state-level partners identifying issues and coordination points. As we made our way into 2021, the routine of the calls did change. Some of our partners who maybe didn't have as much change to their processes, they learned what they needed to do, and they implemented things, allowed us to shape our, reshape our conference call schedules. And now we focus with our hospitals and EMS providers, our primary healthcare providers, including our federally qualified healthcare centers. Dr. Robinson is very active in those calls that we have. And at the start of the school year, we are still conducting coordination calls with our education sector. These calls, you know, as we've moved through time, and we're now moving into 2020, we have adjusted to meet the demands and the needs of our partners. They help set the operational tempo. We're not talking every day necessarily on a conference call, but as, as activity ebbs and flows, our conference call coordination process adjusts appropriately to meet the needs of our coordination partners. Again, the key is creating that shared, common operating picture amongst the teams that are responding. It allows us to provide those information updates, you know, for example, from our hospitals, we receive updates on their hospital capacity and the number of individuals that are in-house receiving treatment for COVID-19. It also allows our frontline healthcare operators to make mitigation recommendations to the health department and emergency management that we can share with leadership. Some of those recommendations are things such as our testing processes and enhancing our testing capability as needed. Claudia mentioned that process that's going on. She's, her team's collaborating with TMH for possible expansion of testing. Again, testing is probably one of the most important things we can do right now as a tool. It allows an individual to identify whether they're infected or not, and those that are infected can isolate themselves and hopefully prevent the spread to other individuals. It also allows them to get early treatment when detected early enough, and we hope that some of these new treatments that are, that are coming down the line, when they're available in Leon County, really help make a difference in the process. But that's the, hopefully, that's a high, high-level review of the process we follow. Again, it's the FEMA process. We are in lockstep with the federal agency, the state emergency management agency, and we implement it here locally.
Thank you for that, Kevin. Appreciate it very much. I'm going to move on now to Shinkton Lammy, our Director of the Office of Human Services and Community Partnerships, to talk a bit more about the testing capacity increase that he's helped coordinate with FQHCs, and then in addition to that, talking about protecting vulnerable populations, specifically homeless. Pass it over to you, Shinkton. Shinkton, you might be on mute, my friend.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Again, as Matt mentioned, I'm Shinkton Lammy, Director of the Office of Human Services and Community Partnerships, and it's through our partnerships that we're meeting the critical needs in our community to combat the spread of COVID-19. We meet weekly with the Health Department and our fairly qualified health centers, our FKHCs, including Bond and Neighborhood Medical Center, to plan and coordinate on COVID-19 testing in Leon County, because testing is one way to slow down the spread of the virus and increase intervention. Since the start of the pandemic, we've conducted more than 100 testing events and provided more than 6,000 tests in the community during those events. Last week, we met three times, and we, being myself, Health Department partners, our emergency management, FQHCs, our communication team, to assess the testing capacity in our community. And it became clear, based on the guidance from the Health Department, that more testing was going to be needed, as we knew that more people were returning to our community following the holidays, as well as knowing that we had students returning, and of course, because of the increase of the Omicron variant. So this past Sunday, we held two testing events, as the County Administrator shared, at our libraries, our Northeast Library and our East Side Library, to assist in the recent surge in testing need, where approximately 500 tests were administered by Bond and Neighborhood. Over the next couple of weeks, we will hold additional testing events to help with the increased need, including next Sunday at Northeast Library, as Claudia mentioned, and next Monday at Fort Braden Library. And we'll hold more events as is deemed necessary by our healthcare providers, to be able to address the need in our community and provide those pop-up testing needs in order to address the need and the capacity in our community. On the homeless front side, for almost two years now, we've been working with our homeless providers to prevent the spread of COVID-19 at our shelters. With the uptick in cases due to the Omicron variant, we, we are restarting our weekly meetings with the continued care, Health Department, Emergency Management, and our homeless services providers to coordinate and identify what we have as formed resources in our community and what we need in, in order to prevent an outbreak in our homeless community. Just this past weekend, we delivered 12,000 face masks at the Carney Center to address the shortages they had there. We're also identifying options to address the need for rapid tests at the shelters, and we're working into looking at ways to isolate homeless individuals and families that test positive for COVID-19 through non-congregate settings. Through continued coordination and communications, we're maximizing the resources available to respond to the needs in our community for our most vulnerable populations during this unprecedented global pandemic. With that, I'll turn it over back to Matt.
Thank you, Shinkton. Appreciate it. I'm going to provide a brief communications update, and then the Chair has asked that I recognize Dr. Temple Robinson, and then we'll move to the hospitals. So we'll be moving into the healthcare provider portion very quickly before I turn it back to the Chairman to facilitate the remainder of the meeting. So let me talk about the communications update for COVID-19. First, as we'll often say, nobody has ever been communicated with too much during a disaster, during an emergency, or during a public health crisis like the pandemic. And we have the opportunity of the county to participate with FDOH in the Joint Information Center, which represents all of the agencies on this call and far beyond, all the public information specialists who are generating the most accurate information with all the expertise at hand. So really, to be honest with you, we're surrounded by a bunch of smarter people who tell us exactly what to communicate, and we can do that together, coordinated, and also with great agility. So over the holiday season, for instance, it was communication about travel and testing and be safe, and all those other CDC-driven messages. But even here locally, when emergency rooms were filling with folks seeking tests, we were able to, as a coordinated function with the county and Joint Information folks, communicate very strategically that that's not the place you should be seeking tests, you should see them in other places. So that allows us to work with our healthcare partners, to help them assist with capacity and demand, and to also work with public health partners, make sure that the message is accurate to the moment, because we all know that the message has changed and evolved over time, as it rightfully should, as we learn more about viruses and we learn more about variants. So I say all that to say, no one's ever been communicated with too much, but we're trying super hard to do just that. Since we've led the longest county communications campaign effort with our partners here on this call in history, two years long, more than 32 million times, read, seen, heard, there's been street teams, there's been print, there's been outdoor, every opportunity you have, minus carrier pigeon, to be able to learn about what you should be doing to keep yourself and your family safe, we've leveraged it. And it's a credit to all the folks that are on this call and our healthcare providers that we've been able to do such. So the communication update is, have we done enough? Never. Are we going to continue to do more and always stay coordinated with CDC, national and local health guidance? Absolutely. So we will continue to do that with all the folks on this call to make sure everyone has the most pertinent information. Can't say enough about the Leon County Vax Map, which is not just about vaccinations, but also about testing locations. We've seen a dramatic increase in the use of that Vax Map, as you would expect for testing locations, and we're continuing to push that out as the best source for folks to find testing locations. I will, as all the folks on this call know, but for those watching, most sites would appreciate or require appointments. So please, do the due diligence, use that map to the best of your ability, and we'll continue to communicate ways to keep our community safe, prepared, and resilient. So with that, I would like to move on to Dr. Temple Robinson, as requested by the Chair, and then I'll go over to the hospitals, recognizing Mark O'Brien, and then Ellen Casey after that. But Dr. Temple Robinson, could you please provide a feedback?
Good morning, everyone. And I first have to acknowledge my partner, Ms. Janay Freeman, who's the CEO at Neighborhood Medical Center, who has been working, she and I have been working shoulder to shoulder for two-plus years now with this. I just want to take a few moments and just say that our biggest concern right now are those people who are sitting at home that are guessing what they have, or trying to self-treat, or waiting to see what's going to happen, and not getting tested. We're concerned that people are waiting too long at home and may wait too late to get help, trying to decide, is it Delta, is it Omicron? Please get tested. We are concerned about those people who are not being tested and are exposing vulnerable people and keeping us on this vicious cycle of workforce strain. If you have staff members that are out with COVID or sick, you can't handle your business and you can't keep your business running. And I all, I hear a lot of talk about Omicron is widespread, and it's a milder illness and so forth, and I try to remind people that Costco and Walmart, they have lower prices, but they can make a profit because they deal in volume. And though Omicron is widespread, if you have enough Omicron, when you start talking about the volume of viruses in the area, sooner or later, it's going to make its profit. And its profit, unfortunately, is going to be hospitalizations and death. So I'm encouraging everyone, the only way we can beat this is to test, test, isolate, and vaccinate. And I'm asking people to continue to do that. Test, test, if you're positive, isolate, and for everyone else, get vaccinated. And I thank you so much, Commissioner Proctor, for this meeting. I'm sure I said too much. I hope I didn't step on any toes, but Omicron, it will make its mark, and it's going to make it in volume. This is what we're worried about.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, for that. I'm going to move on now to our hospitals, and recognizing first Mark O'Brien, then Ellen Casey. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, thank you again for allowing us to participate in this. I think it's a great forum to bring everybody together and make sure that we're all on the same track. Alan's probably going to tell you the same thing. Our challenge here really is on twofold. One is, the volume's not so much of what we're seeing in the hospital and inpatient beds, but really the volumes we're seeing in our emergency rooms. People are using them as a default access point, and I'm glad to hear that there is an expansion of testing sites, because that's what's really needed. People are coming in here to be tested, because they're not necessarily being admitted, but they are being tested, and it is clogging up our, our services for those people who truly do need emergency. And it is clogging up our services for those people who truly do need emergency services. The other thing that is presenting a challenge is, as the community experiences an expansion of this COVID wave, it's impacting everybody, including those colleagues who work in the healthcare environment, which when they contract COVID or exposed to COVID, then that creates a challenge for us, because they then are removed from the workforce for a period of time, which then creates more difficulty, because we have a shortage of qualified workforce to take care of our patients. So we're working through that as we can, the best we can. The real issues, though, as it relates to the technical, clinical piece of Omicron, quite frankly, is much better addressed by our better version of Dr. Fauci, that's Dr. Watson. I think everybody recognizes the impact he has had in a positive way of educating and directing many of the medical aspects and partnering with Claudia and others across our community. But I want to turn it over to Dean to give his more than two cents worth of perspective on what we're doing with here in our community and your TMH.
Good morning. Thanks. Just really quickly, I thought we all might want to hear some specifics related to TMH and the patient population we have. It's interesting, 35 patients this morning, and unfortunately, back to Temple's point, to Claudia's point, my true good partners, is that two-thirds of those patients are unvaccinated, and that's just unfortunate. But with that being said, and this is the interesting part, 45% of the patients that we have in the hospital are truly COVID patients. 55% would be considered incidental, meaning that they're in the hospital, we're testing rapidly or widely, and they've come back positive. They're not here because of COVID. 37% of those patients have pulmonary symptoms. And that's important, because in the most recent surge, you know, the majority of them had a pulmonary symptom. So it is a little bit of a reduced impact. And the individuals that have the pulmonary symptoms, the majority of them are mild. The ones that are severe, we did lose one yesterday, the ones that are severe are unvaccinated individuals that are high risk. So again, the risks that Temple and Claudia mentioned earlier are real. What we're doing is, we're actually culturing out and we're sending to our variant analyzer to determine if they're Delta or if they're Omicron. We'll know that this week. The last two weeks, our variant analyzer, which is a partnership with FSU and Dr. Jonathan Dennis, who's done an amazing job, they were shut down because of the holidays, but they'll be back up this week. So we will have a better idea locally, within our organization, what the variants look like, and specifically hospital and outpatient. The other couple of things I would like to mention are that, one, we're not seeing a lot of school-aged children yet. The few children that we've had in the hospital have been really, really, really itty-bitties, the young ones, not over the age of five. And the final thing I would say is that we did activate our COVID team again two weeks ago in preparation for this surge. So at TMH specifically, we do have a group of individuals that are focused specifically on COVID, which helps with outcomes and efficiency for the community as well. So that's basically what we're doing. And again, last thing I'll mention is, we are partnered with TMH and FSU are partnered to help with testing throughout the community, which has been a savior for us from a testing and outcome standpoint, and it's their all PCR standard of care testing. And thanks for allowing me to speak to this.
Thank you for that feedout. Really appreciate it. And again, this portion, when we hear from healthcare providers like Dr. Robinson, Mark O'Brien, Dr. Watson, and also Ellen Casey, is the most important part of the operations that we do here in the county for what we coordinate and what we respond to. Healthcare capacity and the ability to provide effective healthcare is the most important thing. As you'll notice, some of you are being asked, well, all of you technically, are being asked to turn on your video as we get to the portion where we will all feed out in just one second. So I just want to remind everyone that you're being prompted to turn on your video, and when that's done, you'll be on screen. So FYI, fair warning for everyone. I'd like to move over to Capital Regionals' Ellen Casey for a feedout from that hospital system, and then I will turn it back over to the chairman to facilitate the remainder of the meeting. Ellen?
Thank you all, and thank you Chairman Proctor, just for the opportunity to give an update. And I just want to start by saying thank you to all the healthcare frontline caregivers for now, almost two years have been providing amazing care to our community. Here at Capital Regional, we've actually cared for over 6,700 COVID patients since, really, March of 2020, which has just been exceptional, and I'm grateful for the caregivers on the front lines every day, at all of our healthcare institutions in the community. You know, currently, we're about 20% of the peak that we saw in August in our current census with COVID patients, so significantly less than where we've been. However, to Mark's point and Dr. Watson's point, significant increase in ER visits related to COVID symptoms. So we are, we're working through that dynamic, and as the community has seen increased spread of COVID, so have we amongst our staff. And just to reiterate the point, that it's important for all of us to remain vigilant with our health and COVID in particular, it does impact healthcare professionals, and they're essential as we continue to fight this together. So that's going to remain at the forefront. Some positives, I think, that have occurred over the last two years, we're no longer concerned about PPE. We have sufficient PPE, sufficient practices related to PPE. We have sufficient oxygen, ventilators, and within part of HC Healthcare, which is one of the largest healthcare organizations in the US, we have sufficient resources to be able to move healthcare staffing professionals and other supplies across state lines or even within the state to surge up. So we're, I think we have come a long way as far as the system readiness, as we've learned together through this COVID pandemic, and we're here and ready to serve the community for many months to come.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that very much. And again, I know that was a fairly long update from operations, but really just scratching the service of two years' worth of previous operations and the work that will continue into the future with a focus, as you've heard many different times, on testing capacity and growing that where possible. I'd like now to turn this over to Chairman Proctor to facilitate the rest of the meeting with the participants. Chairman?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, participants. You've shared wonderfully with us. It gives us some sense of where we have been. We can follow the chronology and have a certain confidence that we've seen this dog and pony show, use that as a metaphor before, and we feel that we at least know our way operationally and in collaborating with the various entities. We've heard thus far from the providers, the trench fighters in providing the medical infrastructure, but tomorrow, our universities will bring and orchestrate some 70,000 transient figures in our community, as well as probably the most emotional hot button, our itty-bitty pre-Ks and all the way up to 12th grade will resume going to the public schools and private schools shortly. I wanted to ask the chairman of the school board, certainly hearing some of the comments offered by the county's attorney, noting your efforts to provide safety are there. Could you share with us y'all's plans for reopening, Mr. Jones, our chairman of the school board? And I want to note that Dr. Michelle Gales is representing Superintendent Rocky Hanna, and we welcome you, Dr. Gales, and for the leadership, the hard work that you're doing. Are there things different that you're doing at Leon County Schools that's radically unique from what others are attempting? Are you all feeling confident, and are there ways in which Leon County can support and have your backs as we move forward? And are there resources that need to, nobody should be shamed that we can't do it all, and this is not about doing it all, but how can we be our brother's keeper in a time like this? I wanted, Matt, to, given the time we have, oh wow, we're doing very good. Wanted to ask the school board chairman to give us a sense of what are we, and how are the counties ready for our children next week?
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year to you, Mr. Chair, and to all of our friends who are on this call. I'd like to first announce that our superintendent would be with us. However, as you can imagine, we will be welcoming 35,000 students back into classrooms tomorrow, and 5,000 faculty and staff returned to work just today. Right now, as we presently speak, he's on a phone call now with all of our principals across the district, sharing with them the information regarding our reopening of schools. Also, today at 12 noon, I will join the superintendent for a press conference, also to make certain that all of our constituencies, our families, our parents, and our students are also aware of what we, what reopening schools will look like. We are committed to making certain that our children remain in school. We are, we are not considering at present a digital option, except for those parents who would opt to take advantage of the Leon County virtual options that we currently have before us. We realize that the learning loss that we have suffered over the last two years has been immense, and so we're going to continue our messaging of safety and mask wearing and the importance of vaccination. We, as a Leon County School District, will continue to do what we know, which is best, and that is to teach, to teach our most vulnerable populations, to teach our student populations and our faculty populations on how we can still provide instruction and learning in the safest environments possible. Now, what we also are dealing with, as you noted, the changes in the COVID response and protocols and quarantine and others, those five days, once a person, whether they are asymptomatic or symptomatic, with a COVID positive test, has enormous impacts on our classrooms and our transportation. We are, we are very much aware that our teachers are indeed essential workers. Imagine the impact in terms of having to pivot when you have teachers who are absent, and then you have to then bring classes together. We are also dealing with a substitute teacher crisis, not having enough substitutes to meet what we know is the high demand. So those are the challenges that we are wrestling with as we share the information regarding how we operate as a district to keep our people, our young people, safe. I would also, before I turn it over to Dr. Gales, who provides some more specific information, I'd like to thank the Department of Health and to all of our partners across the community who have done their part to make certain that our teachers and our faculty and our families have been well-served, setting up pop-up sites at our schools where we're able to test our faculty. I want to thank Ms. Blackburn and Dr. Robinson. I see Dr. Cynthia Owens-Harris is on this call, and others who've helped us to make certain that as we continue to communicate and provide what we know is valuable instruction to our students and to our faculty about how we, how we're able to make certain that we'll be able to provide instruction and learning in the best situations possible. I'd also like to tell you, one of the things that we know is very important, and we're ramping this up in our schools, we realize that oftentimes, sometimes it is our students who are the best teachers in the home. And as we realize that this is, as this issue regrettably becomes, it still remains politically divided, we are hoping that our littlest learners and our youngest learners can go back to the house and tell them what they've learned from school about how they can keep their families safe. So without, again, thank you for all of our partners who are found here on this call, for all of your work to help us to keep our schools open. And now I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Community and Professional Services, Dr. Michelle Gales.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gales. Before you weigh in, Dr. Gales, if you just share with us, for parents' sake, what do you all do operationally if your kid has a fever, your kid has these symptoms? Do y'all have a process for parental reporting or self-reporting from children?
The most important thing that we did, Commissioner Proctor, when last year our school district went to a one-on-one, all of our young people are armed with digital Chromebooks. So when a family has to pivot and a student remains at home, that student still is able to remain in contact with their classroom, still be able to provide, be provided instruction, still be able to continue to learn, although isolated. What we are reminding parents of, and again, we're talking about the importance of instruction, we as a school district instructing both teachers as well as parents and families on what we know are the best responses when we do have positive tests or when there are high temperatures. We're making them aware that they should keep their children home.
Okay, Dr. Gales?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Chairman. And thank you for having us here today. As Mr. Jones said, our superintendent, Rocky Hanna, is on calls right now with our principals. To further answer that question, we have policies in place regarding temperatures and different things of that nature, which do ask our parents to work in partnership with us to keep the kids at home. And yes, most importantly, we do have some things in place to make sure that the learning continues as they stay home with maybe high temperatures, coughing, and different things of that nature. We do have policies and will continue to implement those. Our superintendent, school board chair, Mr. Jones, and others will be on a press conference this afternoon at 12 o'clock. Our protocol, for the most part, is going to stay the same. And one thing that I can also report, looking at the numbers, this is the first day back from winter holidays for our faculty and staff members. And those who have called in to say that I have a fever, I have this, I have that, or whatever the case is, is no higher than what we've experienced in the past. So that's a great sign. But we're being ever cautious and making sure that we have things in place, our subs. As Mr. Jones said, we had a Herculean effort to make sure that we have upped our numbers of subs who can make sure that learning continues within the classroom. We have other protocol in place to make sure that people are safe, they're informed, and they know what to do. Our protocol is going to make, be reestablished of what we have in place. Our COVID dashboard, we will see that come back up again. We have letters that will be sent home to parents through our Focus Information System, so that if a child within the classroom tested positive for COVID, parents will receive information and know what they need to do. Safety comes first in Leon County schools. You have to have a safe environment to learn, and we thank all of our partners from the city, county, certainly our healthcare officials. We've been on calls and in communication throughout the winter holidays to make sure that we're ready for a safe start to the second semester of this school year.
Very good. Want to thank Dr. Gales for updating us. I appreciate in light of the confidence with which she and Mr. Jones are exuding, because it seems that they have things well in hand. Next, I want to recognize our university president, Dr. Murdaugh, who's been online, President McCullough, and President Robinson. We'll go in that order. How are things over at TCC, Dr. Murdaugh? And are there any ways in which the county can assist, or that we can better coordinate all of these entities that you hear online today? Is there any assistance which we can supply to TCC, sir? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, again, thank you to everybody who's on the call for what you do in the community. It all works well together. I can't think of a single thing that needs to be enhanced. We rely on the testing that's available, and it is remarkable and available. We rely on the hospitals to address issues of incidence positivity that we run across. And we're in really good shape at TCC. I will tell you, I'm very proud of what we have done throughout this entire thing. We've done heroic things to make sure the environment is as safe as it can possibly be. We've got testing protocols, tracing protocols, alternative plans in place, and we are, we are ready to go. We have the luxury. Of course, we have two roles in the community. One is the credit programming to produce graduates that move to FSU and FAMU. The other is the workforce programming. Let me start with the workforce programming, which is so critical to help people get back into jobs. You can't do any of that remotely quite effectively, and includes law enforcement and commercial truck driving and welding and a variety of other things. We've made the environments very safe for those things to continue. Our credit programming, we've got four different ways to deliver that programming, and we take our lead from the students. We are offering as many in-person classes as students are requesting. Right now, I think we're at about 50%, but we take our lead from students and we adjust accordingly. So we're, we're doing quite well. Faculty and staff are great. We report our positivity weekly. It's on our website for anyone to see. Our numbers are remarkably low when you consider the number of employees we have and the It's on our website for anyone to see. Our numbers are remarkably low when you consider the number of, of employees we have and the number of students we have. So um, now, now having said every bit of that, everybody on this call knows that we write all of our plans with pencils, uh, because plans can change on a moment's notice and we will pivot uh, if we need to, and we're prepared to pivot, uh, as we did when this whole thing began. Thank you for asking and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're very pleased with that update and that report. Uh, we thank you for your leadership and what you continue to do for Tallahassee Community College. Uh, President of Florida State, uh, Dr. McCullough, if you would share, if you're online or you're representative.
Good morning. Uh, this is Kyle Clark. I'm the Vice President for Finance and Administration. President McCullough, uh, was here for the first half of the meeting but had a commitment at 11 that he had to run to. Um, President McCullough, uh, came to the university and reviewed our plans and made several enhancements. And those enhancements um, are continuing on uh, throughout the spring semester. Um, we've kept our staffing uh, levels all the same throughout the pandemic as was discussed earlier in the call, so that we could make sure that we would have adequate testing and vaccination efforts uh, for our campus uh, community. Our testing lab um, has not closed. It has been open throughout uh, the winter break and the holidays and it's been available for our campus community to go and get tested. Uh, there's a line out the door uh, today to be tested as the students return uh, uh, back to uh, Tallahassee. We encouraged our students to get tested before they leave their uh, hometowns and we asked them to stay there if they uh, happen to test uh, positive. Um, in addition to our normal testing, we've also ordered 10,000 at-home tests so that we can deploy them throughout the semester. Um, as we potentially have uh, cells that might pop up or we might have um, instances that we're concerned about. So we have those at our disposal. Um, last week, we also communicated to our campus community, community and let them know that we requested that they start uh, using medical-grade masks. Um, a lot of the studies that have come out now have said that cloth masks are um, easily, easy, more easily uh, penetrated and that we really needed to be using um, KN-95 masks. We've distributed those free uh, to our campus community, to all faculty and staff and students throughout the pandemic and we will continue to do that for uh, the spring uh, semester. In terms of vaccinations, we have continued to offer a vaccination clinic uh, on campus. Uh, they took a slight break with the winter holiday. Uh, they will begin vaccinating and boosting individuals um, on Wednesday and we offer that four days uh, a week uh, with the Department of Health. Um, they help us with the supply for that. So we're very appreciative of, of that relationship. That's uh, our plans. Uh, we have thousands of air purifiers that have been distributed throughout campus. Um, they're in every one of our classrooms. They're in every office that's been requested. Uh, and we've done all that we can to keep our campus community safe.
Excellent. Uh, will you all be having in-class, in-person classes uh, at Florida State?
Um, all 12 of the public institutions, um, the State University System in Florida will offer public instruction. Um, and uh, as President Murdaugh mentioned, that's largely dictated um, off of the demand from the students. I think our number is, is higher than that in terms of in-person classes. Uh, the vast majority of our students want in-person instruction, uh, and that will be offered uh, throughout the spring semester.
Very good. Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Clark. We appreciate uh, great work for the state, much success this school year. Uh, President Robinson, uh, our representative from Florida A&amp;M University.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman Proctor for allowing me to say a few things about uh, what's happening at FAMU regarding our preparation uh, for the spring semester. I need to go back just a little bit to um, talk about where we were, you know, a year and a half ago, where we established a continuity of operations task force that, that meets weekly. Uh, in fact, at one time was meeting bi-weekly to, to adjust to any changes that are occurring in real time regarding our, our preparations and that continues today. But I want to go back to the point that Kyle made. Uh, one of the things I'm, I'm really pleased with is the coordination within the State University uh, system with the Chancellor, the Chair of the Board of Governors and all 12 presidents. Uh, meet weekly to talk about, you know, issues around the pandemic and other things, primarily the motivation for these meetings and uh, the pandemic and it's helped all of us to, to get really better in what we're doing to prepare for, for this um, pandemic. On the 27th of December, uh, Commissioner Proctor and all on the line, the uh, the Board of, the Chair of the Board of Governors and the Chancellor, uh, sent to all of us a a letter indicating that we were looking forward to having, you know, uh, four in-person classes and operations to the extent possible uh, for the spring semester. A few la, a few days later, I believe, on perhaps New Year's Eve, even I sent out a letter to our campus community informing them that we were getting ready for our students to return and faculty and staff for um, in-person operations for the spring semester. Have we, we have tweaked a, a number of things in our uh, operation plans uh, for the spring. Uh, Kyle mentioned one of those where we do provide um, you know, kits, you know, COVID-19 kits for all of our faculty, staff and and, and students. It includes, you know, hand sanitizer is, you know, best practices and, and this time we're adding uh, 10 KN-95 masks for each one of the students, faculty and staff. And there's a process for them to be able to pick those up uh, to, to get ready for the semester. So we're expecting uh, largely uh, in-person classes as, as um, we did for the spring semester. We're staying with um, the double I can see in our dorm students that move again today, some moved in yesterday. Um, and, and at the same time, we've added additional incentives was to encourage students to both get vaccinated and to um, to get tested at the test site, uh, which is seeing some pretty high numbers uh, in the last week or so. And, and you're going to hear a little bit more of that detail from Ms. Tanya Tatum. But, but also there's some of the highlights, uh, Commissioner Proctor. I do want to uh, defer to Ms. Rika Calhoun, who is the, uh, we're Director of our, you know, um, Continuum of Operations Task Force. She also is the um, Director of our Office of Compliance and Ethics at the university and she has to take on this other task. We really appreciate that. And then I, following her, you hear a, a bit from Ms. Tanya Tatum who'll give you sort of the um, what's happening at the, the testing and vaccination site down on his way. I do want to start by congratulating her and all of the folks associated with that collaboration and then includes Leon County, the two hospitals and so many others in this community. Uh, I think they are being selected as the Persons of the Year by the Tallahassee Democrats. Democrat is a well-deserved recognition for them. So let me now go on to, to Ms. Calhoun and give a little bit more detail about uh, some of the things we're doing a little bit differently for the spring semester 2022. Ms. Calhoun.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson, and good morning, everyone. So in our response, we are focusing on our preparation of people and spaces and that's just been kind of the theme of our response um, over the last two years. Um, so we continue to employ enhanced cleaning protocols and mitigation efforts um, through initiatives like temperature kiosks that we have throughout our buildings, sanitization stations, which are um, in common spaces in our buildings. They have disinfectant, hand sanitizer, um, and, you know, wipes. Um, we're also preparing constituencies by keeping them abreast of university updates and changing guidance. And as we know, that changes on the dime. So um, this semester, we provided a welcome back guide, the quarantine and isolation guidance and vaccination comparison overview. And so we've really used, um, you know, as one of our, um, as someone mentioned earlier, you know, you can't over-communicate. So we've used every communication avenue in our disposal to provide this information and get it out. So that includes um, our websites, uh, our email system, as well as our FAMU mobile app, which our faculty, staff and students can use to self-screen um, and report as well. So in addition to um, the initiatives that Dr. Robinson mentioned, we continue to be vigilant around um, the variants and, you know, looking ahead um, to make sure that we're staying on top of it and strategizing.
Thank you. Ms. Tatum.
Thank you, um, Dr. Robinson and Commissioner, um, Proctor. Um, thank you. Um, the FAMU testing site continues to operate. Um, we are certainly seeing an increase in the individuals um, that are coming to the site. Um, we have added additional services and staff to help to accommodate that. Yesterday, we tested over 3,800 individuals um, at that site. And um, so we anticipate to continue to see an increase. We will probably add additional more staff. Uh, I think there are about four more staff that are coming on. Um, in this coming week, we added 10 staff last week. Um, so we are continuing to try to accommodate as much as possible. Um, we are also continuing on our vaccination efforts. Um, our vaccinations, we are offering all three vaccines um, to individuals that come. And we now have delivered over 23,000 um, vaccinations. And so we're really pushing that and we're trying to encourage our particular student um, population to test and to vaccinate with um, a variety of um, incentive programs. Um, because we think particularly with them coming back on campus, that we do want them to test as soon as possible so that we can, you know, make any adjustments in their living arrangements. Um, and we can try to manage this um, as much as possible on our campus. I think that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And Commissioner Proctor, just one additional thing. In addition to the uh, community-based testing and vaccination site on one inch way, we, we also opened uh, this fall um, a FAMU um, COVID-19 PCR testing laboratory with uh, the equipment and data information system and so forth uh, provided by Thermo Fisher. As you know, one of our DOMs is the Vice President uh, at Thermo Fisher. And uh, the funding for the staffing was due to the generosity of the Gates Foundation. And whereas that's not available to the general public, it is available uh, to the faculty, staff and students at FAMU as well as the other uh, three private HBCUs in the state of Florida if they choose to take advantage of it. But it is available and I have to give a huge shout again to uh, Ms. Tatum for that, along with uh, Dr. Cynthia Hughes-Harris, who's on the line uh, with us this morning as well, the Director of our Institute of Public Health.
President Robinson, may I ask, um, I've been reading about the medicine that you take the first three, three, four days when you uh, contract this um, this um, condition. Do you have some of that very special uh, quickly hurry up and get well um, injections there, you and Ms. Tatum?
Uh, no. No, we don't.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Robinson. Much success in this school year. Uh, I too would like to uh, echo um, and uplift the names of uh, uh, Dr. Tatum, Tanya Tatum. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Rika Calhoun. You know, um, the sake of this community, that when the issue of testing first jumped out, uh, I'm so pleased that Dr. Robinson offered Florida A&amp;M University uh, up on that north end of the end zone. Uh, I stole a, Vince, I stole a few touchdowns there, you know, I played high school quarterback at FAMU High. So that was one of my favorite ends of the stadium, you know, and they opened up the test site up there on the north end uh, that I just love uh, going down to score. And uh, I really want to thank President Robinson because he took to this um, just so organically, Dr. Cynthia Harris, uh, Dr. Temple Robinson, uh, Dr. Freeman from uh, Neighborhood. Uh, you all have done an outstanding. And I, I think that when you read today's article, which trivets Ms. Tatum and others as the joint Persons of the Year, uh, it speaks to the spirit, it speaks to the commitment, the character, uh, all of those wonderful things which you've uh, uh, as the newspaper pointed out today, when you say go get a test, uh, you never say whereabouts. It's just assumed now that you're going down to FAMU. I did, uh, President Robinson say to uh, City Commissioner, uh, Diane, uh, uh, Williams-Cox, when y'all opened up one inch way, uh, it was just ridiculous. I tried to get a change. Uh, it was just a traffic jam. I couldn't get to class on time. I was totally upset and did all I could to get the city to move that from the road that I traveled to class. And uh, when I passed there yesterday, uh, Vince, it was just, it was amazing how many people and Mrs. uh, Mrs. uh, um, um, said here moments ago, Ms. Calhoun, that there were 3,800 people. I counted more than that, but you know, she, who, you know, who's checking who. So thank you all for that outstanding work. Uh, we know that we're ready uh, for what you do. And I think that there's been an increase in testing and that's an emphasis that we, we've had. Sheriff Walt McNeil uh, is with us. He has a special population. Uh, that population uh, is less transient than college students. Uh, perhaps uh, somewhat older than uh, Mr. Darryl Jones and Dr. Gales' population. But nevertheless, a population which um, is reasonably large. And uh, Sheriff uh, McNeil is with us. And I, I would like to hear from the sheriff to make sure that a very vulnerable group, uh, how sheriff are you dealing and handling that? Is there anything that Leon County can do to undergird your effort?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you and thanks to all the uh, participants on the call. I uh, as I said and listened to uh, the presentations and the status reports, I was uh, buoyed up by the fact that we have tremendous leadership in this community. I am just honored and proud to be a, a member of such a outstanding team of people. Uh, as relates to our detention facility, uh, we have, uh, as was indicated, we are following CDC guidelines as well. Uh, we're emphasizing obviously the same things, uh, uh, social distancing, hand washing, uh, and wearing a mask. Uh, our population that you spoke of, Mr. Chairman, that's about 1,100 uh, inmates uh, as we speak. And uh, we're very fortunate to have a provider, Horizon, uh, which is our medical provider. Uh, they have uh, uh, to date, uh, given 600 vaccinations uh, to our inmates. We offer the vaccinations to every one of the inmates, but 600 uh, who are currently in our care and custody have uh, have taken the uh, uh, vaccine. We have 40 uh, that have come down with the COVID uh, uh, and, and we are working with them. Uh, the good thing about uh, those persons who are in our custody and in care is that they're just like being at the hospital. Uh, unlike some of us who are at home that may come down with the uh, the virus, uh, you have to try to get medications to you. Uh, those persons are seen by a doctor on every two or three hours. Uh, a nurse or a doctor stops by to check their status and see where they are. Uh, we are encouraged, uh, and hopefully uh, uh, by this, the, the variant, uh, all indications are, uh, that it has not been as a, as hard-hitting uh, from an illness perspective as COVID-19 was. And so we're not seeing any significant uh, illnesses as relates to. Most are asymptomatic, which is also sometimes a problem for us trying to figure out who those persons are. But our staff has done a tremendously good job of trying to identify those persons and give them the treatment that they need. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you asked a question, what more can the county do? Uh, what our partners can do, I can tell you that the Health Department, Claudia Black, uh, Larry, uh, as, uh, and Dr. Temple Robinson have all been uh, working extremely close with my staff, uh, trying to make sure that they do everything they can to support us. I don't know anything more uh, that can be done that isn't being done already. Uh, but again, thank you all for your support and hopefully, Mr. Chairman, that answers your questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. You've uh, you've delighted us to know that you're on top of it. Um, we appreciate you. Um, it's very emotional, in particular when county commissioners receive a call from family, loved ones. Uh, it's been hard the last uh, few months, uh, because people no longer have that visitation uh, the same as before. And uh, it, it causes uh, angst among, uh, amongst friends and family when they can't get and get, can't get to uh, uh, reports. So very sensitive stuff you're dealing with and we thank you for your readiness and uh, willingness to uh, to uh, care for that population. Um, we dealt with um, with our providers. Uh, we've heard from uh, our big entities of We've heard from our big entities of constituent groups, our school district, our universities, our local jail. But I think that policy is a perspective that we will not leave out and policy persons today online. We have Representative Allison Tant, we have Mayor Daley, our assistant city manager, Cynthia Bobber. And we know that as our counterparts at the city, the city has a large workforce. We know that the legislature will be opening next week, I believe, on 11, 11. It opens and the legislature, when it opens, it also has a large constituent following. So there will be just masses of people here in Tallahassee from many places coming here. So Representative Tant, you honor us with your presence today and I know you're preparing for the legislative session. Are there points of, of interest that you'd like to share with us? And you've heard our county attorney recite some of the new laws that you all passed in November? And are there anything of a more meticulous nature that all of us should be apprised of as we prepare for the various audiences and constituent groups who have come to Tallahassee here in January? Representative Tant? Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Tant is no longer on the call. I want to thank her for her presence. There's Mayor Daley on, on call and Mr. Mayor, we invite your word of greeting or of policy consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's great to see everybody. Happy 2022. I want to thank the healthcare community and the university community for everything that y'all are doing. It's going to get really busy very soon. School board, I know y'all are gearing up for tomorrow. We really appreciate everything that everybody's doing, including the county. At the city, obviously, health, safety and welfare of the public and our workforce continue to be our priorities. Internally, we're following CDC guidelines. Every department has put in place their own individual COVID strategies to mitigate any risks and I'm proud to announce that within the scope of continuity of services, we have no cancellations or disruptions to services at the city of Tallahassee at this time, Mr. Chairman. We're going to keep on keeping on.
Well, I know you guys are trying to keep up with us down at the city, Mr. Mayor, but we want you to know that we've been working on our sprints and we've been working on our speed drills, but we're trying to stay ahead of you guys this year. And so get ready, get, we thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all that the city of Tallahassee is doing, the frontline of, in particular, our public works workers, the public works workers here at Leon County. We all essential workers, actually, and we are all equally as vulnerable in the climate of which we exist. Vince, I believe that we have largely heard unless I have drastically overlooked something from our outline, I am comfortable that we reached the point, a great point of stopping unless there is something else that you note.
I think you've covered it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Madam Attorney, is there anything that we dropped the ball or we need to make good on?
No, it's a check.
Okay. Are there any comments coming from either of our participants that you would like to make as a closing statement or a concern for the good of the order? Let me on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Leon County, say how delighted we are for the report that we have received. And in the face of the mounting data, the surge of COVID, it's several variants, we, we feel comfortable this morning that in your respective places, you have prepared well. I did not hear any weak spots. The only thing that I did note as a takeaway, and I'm not quite sure how we deal with that, but Mr. O'Brien and to the hospital leaders, when the hospital announces, don't come to our emergency rooms to get a test, we're sensitive that it does not place a chilling effect upon other conditions that people may have in our qualified emergencies that you're, and I think that if we can, Mr. Peters, Shinton, in terms of making sure that don't come to the emergency room, that we are articulating and making clear testing sites and that the hospital emergency room is not the primary testing site. But Dr. Robinson has that on lock over there on Wannish and other places and that we're emphasizing pop-up testing. We want to emphasize as well that if Leon County can back you up, support you in any way, please know that's our job to provide for health, safety and welfare of this community. And to that, we're going to remain committed, we're going to remain caring and we're going to remain our best selves. We're very, very fortunate as a community in Florida to have the assets, the human asset that we have and on a per capita basis, you won't find in the southeastern United States a community with the gravitas and it has extraordinary leadership and capacities of intellectual wherewithal to meet a challenge. So I say to you, community, let us not get weary in well-doing. And I believe, and I'm hoping that you believe, that if we link ourselves together and walk one with the other, that we can get through these moments and we can get through them triumphantly. I want to thank all of you for what you have done. And if I, or Leon County's government, can be supportive to you, please do not hesitate. That's what we do. And we love you, we respect you and we honor each of you for what you're doing and to God, we say thank you and to God, we say we'll give you glory. For this call, we're grateful if we find and discover in the coming days that there is a need or an outbreak or what have you, we will reassemble and talk about if we feel ourselves getting overpowered or if we're feeling that legislatively, statutorily, we just don't have the authority to deal with crises, but we're hopeful and we'll stay freed up that we don't have to do that. I'm feeling so good about today and if you need me or our government, please do not hesitate. Again, we thank you for sharing. We're a great community and we're letting no one, no one talk us down or back us down from the roles and the responsibilities which are ours to conduct. Thank you all. Have a good day.